Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody, for being here for our reception of Goldendale City Council on February 18th, 2020. We have a full council, so we're in good shape there. We don't have a public hearing tonight, but we do need a motion on the agenda and a consent agenda for approval.
Can you have a question?
Okay.
Last night I couldn't find the agenda posted on the website. Was that posted?
I posted it this morning.
And so does it meet the one day prior guidelines to open meeting law?
How many staff members does the city have?
Staff members.
You mean total employees?
Total employees.
That would be 25.
So then my question is, would that meet open meeting law requirements for posting the agenda?
We've had that happen before.
Otherwise, we, anything that we do now would be out of order.
That's a good question, Phil. You got me there.
We've gone on with the meetings before.
Well, let's go ahead and have our meeting, and if there's an issue, we'll have to resolve it with attorney and see how we would re-agree and then go. We don't have any things that need action tonight, anyway.
Right.
So we go forward.
Yeah, always your first.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? If not, do we have a motion for approval of the agenda and the consent agenda?
So, I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda for this meeting, and is the consent agenda? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passed. It's a business for tonight, in particular, two presentations. The first will be given by the Energy Analysis Feasibility by Scott Lewis from Apollo. And welcome you, and anxious to hear what you have to say.
Before you begin, there are at least five of the seven council members you've never met before.
Okay, Mrs. Ray. And it's been a while since I've been back.
So can you do a little recap for us and maybe give us a little history that got us to this point?
Absolutely.
So that we have a little bit better understanding.
Yeah, absolutely. So about a year ago, we approached the city. Actually, I think I met Larry at a conference, and the mayor as well. And basically, what Apollo does is we look for energy efficiency upgrades. So anything that uses energy, so windows, lighting, HVAC, anything that can help conserve energy, we look to change out. We look for opportunities in solar as well. And so there was a little bit of interest to say, what can we be doing better, if at all? And do we have the opportunity to introduce solar to the town as well? And so essentially, we started this process about a year ago. We kind of pumped the brakes a little bit because of the timing of grants and things like that. We just didn't want to hurry up the process just for the sake of trying to force something that might not be there. So tonight, we prepared somewhat of an analysis. We have a PowerPoint presentation that we put together that examines both energy efficiency and solar projects. This is a different mechanism versus having a design, and then a bid, and then we build a project. We, in this project, we've used the state's energy program, which we have to go out every two years and get certified to be able to provide these services, which meets all bid law requirements that, so that you don't have to engage with an architect and do all this kind of stuff. Apollo actually does all that for the city's behalf. We would not be under contract with the city straight away. We would go through the state, and then the state would contract with the city. That's not confusing enough already? Does anybody have kind of a general idea of what this kind of process is, or have you heard about it before? And that's okay if you haven't. It's relatively new for a lot of folks here in eastern Washington. So as far as Apollo is concerned, there are 13 of us statewide, ESCOs, if you will, energy service companies that can provide these types of services. So again, if you wanted to still use the state's program, but engage with somebody else, that's okay. We'd like you to choose Apollo, if at all possible, to do a project, but that's why we kind of helped prepare this analysis. So is that enough detail?
Thanks, Scott.
Okay. And if you have any questions along the way, please feel free to stop me, and I don't want to take up too much time, so we can just kind of jump into it without, all right. But again, my name is Scott Lewis with Apollo Solutions. And basically, for the city of Goldendale, we looked at, as I say, energy efficiency and solar as the main interest there. We looked at city hall, the fire hall, police station, the city shop, public workshops, wastewater treatment plant, and basically, what we came away with is there are opportunities there. However, either the runtime of the facilities or various things that we could change things out, but it wouldn't pay for itself in an efficient manner. So it might take a 20- to 30-year payback to take care of some of these items. And so we felt like it just wasn't enough of a payback to the city to continue exploring those. Certainly, as you can see in the list of potential facility improvement measures, that's what PHMS are, lighting upgrades, HVAC remodel here. But again, the savings over time wasn't enough to justify. If the city were to take a loan, the loan payment wouldn't be met, so you'd essentially be running a deficit each year to help pay those off. So we look for projects that take about 10- to 15-year payback. So if we took a 10- or 15-year loan, the energy savings that you're already paying to your utilities would ultimately just be diverted to pay for a loan. So essentially, you're cash neutral or cash positive even. We've included some pictures in here as well, the aeration basin, the blowers. Basically, the biggest need that we found with the blowers is there's an opportunity there. However, the way it's currently being run is very efficient. It's probably about the best you could do. And there is some risk that Apollo would take on with that if we're changing out an entire system. We just couldn't guarantee that it would be more energy efficient because it's being run really well. Fire hall lighting. And again, if there's any interest to continue to move forward with an energy project this way, whether it is a lighting upgrade or whatnot, we just felt like if we were to turn that back over to the city, the city might be able to actually handle the lighting yourselves. But if we ever get to a point where we want to explore that, we can certainly bring that back. And again, this whole process is designed to have us host the pricing exercises. We bring everything back to you and say, how do you feel about this? And at every step of the way, we need your input. So I apologize for, we're at the proposed solar array location, but you have a great fenced area at the wastewater facility. Be prime for a 100 KW. That was the largest allowable array that the state allows. And anything beyond that, the utility companies would consider you competition, so they would charge you pretty heavily for that. So we would try to keep it, max it out at 100 KW. The other thing to think about on the solar side, and this is just a proposed overhead shot of what that would look like. Obviously, it's movable. We can shrink it down. We can manipulate it any way you like, but just to kind of show the scale of what would be there. But basically, we just, we try to choose locations that not only are fenced already, that also keeps the cost low, but that we're not going to use so much solar power that it overruns what's being used at the facility, and we ultimately just donate that back to the utility. So we try to size it properly. Unfortunately, your treatment plant, as you'll see on the next couple of pages, uses more than enough energy there to not overrun that. Is everything, we're doing okay so far? Okay. So as you can see on the next page, utility cost comparison, the treatment plant using over $50,000 a year is your biggest user. And as you can see in the city shop, city hall, police, and fire station, we just don't have enough of an energy bill there to make those hundreds of thousands of dollars of improvements to not reduce that too much. So on the, and again, our engineers did a great job kind of coming up with electric consumption, looking at the last three years' worth of utility bills. They pulled 2018 as a year that was a good example of how much we'd be able to use there. So basically, 100 KW array produces X number of kilowatt hours. And you guys produced 811 kilowatt hours in 2018 alone at this site. So again, we're not anywhere close to using up everything that that site produces. We included an example of the city of Palouse and their well pump. They were actually our first project that we ever did this for. It's a ground-mounted array, so there's no moving parts. It's a fixed array, which means that it's not tracking the sun. It's just a no-moving parts, which is pretty ideal. We've done one moving array up in the city of Colville, and that was not very fun because, as you can tell, moving parts, potential for snow and water to get into those moving parts. We learned a lot of lessons, so we would recommend going with a fixed array. Ground mount is great. If we have enough roof space, we can do that too. But we don't necessarily have that capability here to put on the roof. One additional thing that we looked at was water metering. And I believe the city did a water meter project not too long ago, or continues to replace water meters annually. And so if we ever get to a point where we want to look at water metering, we would provide an analysis based upon how efficient the meters are right now, and then what it would look like if you're, say, you're 85% efficient on your water meters. If we took it up to 98%, that additional 13% revenues for the city would produce a five-to-eight-year payback. But again, if it's being replaced annually, and you guys are okay with that, with what you're currently having, then there's no need to look at that. We have our five-step process here, so the first couple steps are on Apollo's dime. So even though we've been at this for about a year now, the city has not incurred any expenses to this point. So we've looked at utility bills. We've done the walkthroughs. We've provided some information. And then we're at the end of the second stage here. So what we would look to do on a potential solar array, which we have the costs in there as well, is kind of fine-tune everything in the next phase, and then look at applying for grants. Because with the solar array, the size that we're looking at, we wouldn't want to foot the entire bill for that for the savings it produces. We'd need grant monies to help us. So that's what we would look to do in this professional or project development proposal. It's an investment-grade audit. That's just taking care of the engineering time to develop the guaranteed not to exceed cost. So this is a no-change where to process. So if we give you a guaranteed not to exceed cost of $100, and it comes in at 110, that's $10 out of Apollo's pocket. If we come in under budget, it stays in the city's pocket. So we also have to guarantee the savings as well. So if we say we're going to save you $10, and we save you 12, that's great. If we only save you eight, we have to write you a check for the difference. So that's kind of an insurance policy for the city to be able to say, this still makes sense. The fourth phase is our construction, and then our fifth is our measurement verification, which is where we have to prepare a report for you folks to come back and say, here's how much we said we were going to do, and here's how much we actually did. So we have a period of one to three years of a measurement and verification. So it's all based on what the city would like. And then we've also prepared some budget costs. And like I say, this is purely informational tonight. There's no decisions to be made. Department of Commerce just released their solar grant, well, they didn't release a solar grant, but they said we're going to be releasing this in late summer, early fall, and we would be able to apply between 50% and 2/3 of the project cost be covered by a grant. We'd also look at going after some additional grants to get that number more in the 80% category, to get that taken care of, so that the city's out of pocket would only move out 20%. Again, that 20% over a period of time would be funded by the savings that the array produces. I feel like I'm talking really fast, guys, so am I, are we doing okay still? So we do have a range of project costs of what we've seen thus far. And this is where I'd really like to come back at another time and get this really dialed in. Because of the rules and regulations that Department of Commerce has kind of come out and said, this is what it's going to look like, we want to make sure that we can trim the fat, if you will, and come back with some more concrete data and information, whether it needs to be X number of year payback, or whether we can go back to our subcontractors and get them to lower their price as well. The energy savings, we feel like that's a pretty good number to come in at. And if you think about right around $8,000 annually in savings, that's kind of a good number to go for there, a little median price there. And so based on all of this, just wanted to answer any questions that you have. If you say, Scott, thanks for doing this, but we're not interested at this time, or we don't want to move forward anymore, that's okay. Again, there's no cost incurred to date. But if you'd still like us to go through the remaining steps and come back with some more concrete information, that's great. We would be looking at about $150,000, $200,000 out of pockets potentially. So there again, if we're not interested in taking a loan, or if we want to look at a combination of reserves and a loan, any number of different things, that's what we would need to kind of bet out before we move forward as if there's an appetite for taking a loan and having the energy savings, fuck with that loan. What you're already paying to utilities would just be to worry to pay the loan.
So you mentioned a 20- to 30-year payback on a lot of some of these earlier energy efficiency projects. Was that including any potential grant availability? Or is that just standalone pull-out rate cost and payback period to recoup that from the savings?
You know, it depends. Some of them were, so like the lighting. Well, Department of Commerce has energy grants as well. It covers a quarter of the project cost. But yeah, so that 20- to 30 years, even over 30 years, was before grants. But that has to fall under a 35-year payback to even apply for the energy grants. But again, if we're talking about a $200,000 replacement of something, and we only spend $3,000 annually at that location, even if we were saving it all, it's a tough payback.
And do you have a report with some of the details of your work that is available?
You know, at this point, I'll need to double-check with the engineers. Basically, the report, we could probably look at some field notes and things like that. But as far as the analysis goes, if we're looking at the, we can probably get you a few things. Let me double-check on that, and I apologize. But we usually just provide that after the third phase of the investment grade audit. So just to look at that.
And that third phase of the investment grade audit, that would be contracted services that you'd be reimbursed for?
Correct, yeah. And it's just the engineering time that it takes to develop the guaranteed not to exceed cost and the guaranteed savings.
So have they developed a proposal of what that's going to work and costs might be?
We have started it, but we wanted to wait until the grants were released to be able to to make sure that we weren't spending so much time. If we say it's going to be $18,000 and it not work, it's going to be worth $5,000, and that might be a little more palatable, so we just have to make sure.
Okay, thank you.
You mentioned that previously, that if we did have solar panels and there was a surplus, where was that surplus going in, or would we have a potential surplus?
You would not have surplus. You use so much energy at the treatment plant that we wouldn't come even close to reducing that.
No, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
Is there a percentage number you're looking at for that usage amount? Like 100% of $100,000, you're looking at getting 20% of that paid back by the solar array?
So basically, so if, say it's $600,000, and we can get 2/3 of it paid, so we have grants for $400,000, you're out of pocket is $200,000. The $8,000 in energy savings, what does that look like to pay that loan back? So it needs to come back at a decent rate there. And I don't know if that answers your question.
Well, I was just looking at the yearly cost on the wastewater treatment plant. $15,000, and we're only going to get the savings of?
Yeah, between $7,000 and $10,000, basically, is what we're looking at there. Which just basically, it boils down to how many kilowatt hours are being used there. And on the proposed array that we have, need to double-check. So a 100 KW solar array produces about 143,000 kilowatt hours, and you guys are currently using about 800,000 kilowatt hours. So it would reduce it a fair amount, but again, we have a lot of usage there for certain places.
Well, it says we're only using 811,000, and this is doing 100, so it's only going to reduce it. So it's still going to burn 600 and some dollars?
Kilowatt hours, yes.
It could be sold back through net metering?
So it would be a net metering agreement, but yeah, so they would set up a meter right behind your main commission there. And then, yeah, so it would just basically count as a credit each month, especially during the summer. And then if we have any credits left over from the summer, it goes back so far. But again, we're just scratching the surface of what's being used there.
Oh, right. So what would be, this project would only be for the water treatment plant, is that correct? Until the other facilities would not have any solar panels? Or you mentioned having solar panels on the roofs of the facilities. Is that feasible for the other facilities?
You know, we would have to provide an analysis of that if you guys would like to explore roof-mounted arrays. But then again, if it comes time after 10 or 15 years to replace the roof at that time, we have to look at removing everything and then putting it back up there. Based on the usage, we might be able to use it all, but it would be a very small array, and we'd have to get, obviously, grants for that still. So we felt like the array at the treatment plant had the most bang for its buck. But if you'd like to look at anything else, if you feel like there won't be a need for a roof at the fire station for the next number of years, then you might want to look at that as well. We can do the shading analysis pretty soon.
That would be, the usage amount that we show here for all the other facilities is comparable to a household, which would be a household solar kind of thing?
And at that point, it might just make sense to go direct with the smaller solar array outfit. We mostly just do, we don't do anything with residential. Yeah, it's just motion.
Do you happen to know if there's a specific RCW who can explain more about the limitation at 100 kilowatt hours beyond what it is in the county's pocket?
Yes, there is. And I wish I knew it off the top of my head, but yeah, we can absolutely get that. We'll give it over to Larry, and then he can probably disperse it as well. But yeah, it's, I think the state of Washington just said 100 is a nice, easy number, and so it's, I wish I had a better answer.
Any comments or questions? Thank you, Scott. This was great. We appreciate both your candidness and your clarity and the way you explain these different issues. Certainly given us a target on a place we need to make sure we can eventually reduce the amount of uses.
Absolutely. Well, what I like to do is, like I say, refine some of the numbers and make sure everything lines up, and then if we can come back another time and discuss it further. But if you have any questions at all, we'll certainly give you as much information as we possibly can.
Thank you. Thanks, Anderson. We appreciate it. The next presentation is the quarterly report given by Dana Peck, Detective Director of the Goldendale Chamber of Commerce. Dana, can you get this quarterly update?
Well, thank you. For the new members on the council, good year to be a new member. We're changing the focus of what the chamber is doing in 2020 over the last couple of years. So it'll be new to some of the folks here and a change to others. But just as a quick recap on page two, I want to go over what we're going to talk about here, I guess. A little bit of difference in the prior presentations, for this one, they're going to reflect the change in how the chamber is going to spend 2020. Recent developments, there's, I think it's page three that I'll go over that. The business and community development activities replaces what were just solely focused economic development activities in 2018 and 19. Next steps, there's an action item I'm going to leave you with for your consideration, and of course, any questions that you might have. Page two is a reflection of really our 2019 contract with the city for economic development. The city contracted with the chamber separately from the visitor information center funds that we get for tourism and business promotion to really focus on some specific economic development activities that were available to the community. A large portion of that $10,000 went into preparing grant applications for the broadband curb grant, that resulted in a really nice piece of work by the now WSP people. We did the language drafting on the capital request that Representative Mossbrocker did such a great job of shepherding through. It's really more her money than anything we had to do, but we prepared the necessary capital budget request that led to the $500,000 for the airport. Not taking any credit for that, just kept the words on the page that Gina could run with. Excuse me, Representative Mossbrocker could run with, sorry. In anticipation of the reopening of the observatory this year, which is set for mid-April, looks like the governor might actually come to do the ribbon cutting, which is very exciting. I think that probably reflects his wife's interest. She had a tour of the facility when she was here, looking at some hospital programs some months back in September. And that's not a sure thing right now, but it sure looks pretty good. A couple of the things that we worked on is a portion of this $10,000 were helping the observatory get ready for that opening in terms of supporting their website redesign and implementation. And also what I'm talking about here today, which is Dark Skies Community Application to what's called the International Dark Skies Association. There are windows of opportunity to putting those applications in, and the next one's February 24, which is why a lot of this work has been scheduled around this meeting. You know, the real reason for focusing so much on economic development for the last couple of years has just been this amazingly large opportunity that we've got for the community and the county and the home storage project. That's, even as we're speaking here right now, the House in Olympia is voting on a bill that we testified on a couple of weeks ago that would make it a priority of the state, that project, which would not really expedite, but put a spotlight on it when there's agency decisions that have to be made and hopefully go to the top of the pile. And you know, the reason for really focusing on that is there was a large need for local support for that project, local being city, county, and state. It's a federally regulated project, and we just wanted to make sure that there weren't any gaps in our support of the project. And that's why you've heard me talk about it so much in really 2018 and 2019. At this stage, the corporate developers have put in their application, you know, multimillion-dollar document to FERC. It's moving through the process very nicely. The need for local supports, I think, pretty much been met at this point. Between the bill that's being passed in the House, hopefully tonight, and a comparable bill in the Senate, there'll probably be some public meetings that we want to organize around in the future. But the need for the sort of just really thoroughly focused and ongoing attention is not nearly as pronounced as it has been in past years. And what that really all means when you strip away the verbiage is, I think we got our job done. You know, I don't think there's that much more we can do for the developers. It's what they can do for themselves going forward. And one of the side effects of all of this is that if they do, in fact, build that project, they'll reimburse the PUD for the money that the PUD spent as the initial project developer, which is, I think, around $2 million. So it doesn't just build on what the PUD got started, it reimburses them almost as though they built it and got paid for it. In the world of energy projects, it's called a developer payment. So there's multiple reasons to hope this happens. But the fact that it's reached this stage means that the chamber can kind of go back to more traditional, how do we help our local retail businesses get healthy and stay healthy? And the real focus that we have on that, the major events that are coming up are the observatory opening in mid-April that I already mentioned. If you haven't seen pictures of what the facility looks like, or driven up the hill to take a look yourself, it's just completely different. It's a magnificent building. The grounds are places that you want to go for a picnic. It's all landscaped with picnic tables. The parking lot makes sense as opposed to what it was like up there previously. And it's just an astounding building. And I think the amount of tourism attention we're going to get as the chamber helps parks promote it is going to really surprise everybody. We had a kind of a test meeting toward the end of last year where we had a how to make money off the observatory, which is the grass way of money off the observatory, which is the crass way of saying it, but it's really what the focus was, where we had a workshop at Duennell's for local businesses that wanted to hear more, not just about the building, but okay, if it's going to bring in all of these people, how can the community benefit from it financially? Motels are very interested. They were well represented. The restaurants and stores have the challenge of, this tends to be an evening crowd. As Troy Carpenter, who's the Parks guy up there says, the first question people ask him at 11 o'clock at night in Goldendale when the program's over is work and we go to eat? The answer is, uh, bigs for a hot dog. And just, just in talking to Pariselli at the U L S and Chad at Townhouse, I think the opportunity exists for them to coordinate with programs that are coming to the observatory to make it really worth their time when they can see in advance that there's going to be a pulse of people coming to consider reopening, you know, close when they normally close, but they have some sort of, you know, sandwiched kind of thing going for the crowd that comes. And this is what we're going to try to facilitate more. The, the attendance at the, this kind of experimental session went so well that we're going to do a couple more of them and just have a real drumbeat of, hey, there's an opportunity here. There's new money coming into town. The hours are weird. I'm not sure what it does for Carquest, but I think for the motels, the, you know, actually some of even some of the shops, if we do this right, we can probably capitalize on that more than just have people hop in their cars and buses and drive home after the show, which is what we're trying to alleviate. On the Home and Garden Show this year, it's May 1st through the 3rd. We found that we were overlapping with a similar event in the Dalzic for a couple of years and we've pushed ours back a little bit. I think that gets us into better weather on top of it. This year, we're going with an event management company that's been newly constituted and a couple of people that live here in town and work out of the Dalz are going to just take over the marketing and operation of the Home and Garden Show for us. This year is sort of an experiment for contracting that out with people that manage events for a living and market things for a living. And the idea is to really let them get their feet wet this year. And then to the extent they think they want to recast it, you know, rebrand it, if you will, going into 2021, they will have seen how it works for a year. They're going to change as much as they can for this one, but probably the 2021 show will be dramatically expanded on the basis of what they learned this year. And it's a reflection really of two things is that there's people that manage events for a living and love it. There's people like the three of us at the chamber that have been doing it for the last four years that we know how to do it, but it isn't exactly our idea of a good time. And it's also one of those things where it just needs a new set of eyes. I mean, the Home and Garden Show has been out there at the Joan Fry Arena more or less in the same form for the better part of 10 years. It's time to bring in some pros to really think about what we can do with it. And it's really interesting to see people who do this stuff for a living. I mean, they really just instantly start spinning ideas, you know. How many of them are going to work? We'll see. But I think it's going to be a real nice direction and really up our game for the Home and Garden Show somewhat in this year and even more next year. Oregon Trail Rally's coming back, you know, on May 30th. They don't have a list of the drivers that are going to be there, but they're really taking a hard look at trying to get up into the timber roads. I know the Western Pacific folks are in conversations with them on Saturday about getting a couple of routes going up that direction. It's actually a big deal, which we have not found a way to capitalize on very well in the community so far. And that gets into the next three points that I've got on this page. And that, how do we help the local retail people capitalize on these events? The first thing we're going to do is go back to having chamber luncheons. You know, we had chamber luncheons that were business oriented for a while. Lunches and people with operating businesses don't go together real well. We're probably going to bring back business evening events of some sort, although that's not something that we zeroed in on. But, but for what used to be the chamber luncheons, what we're going to do is we're going to have two weeks before each event. And if you go back, I think it's the next couple pages back, you'll see a list of all the events that I know of at this point. I know the Abay folks are talking about bringing back the demolition derby. That's not on here. But two weeks before the event, we'll have a chamber luncheon where the event sponsor gives a presentation to the folks who want to show up, the newspaper and the, and any luncheon attendees, the TV. But it's far enough in advance that people will actually hear about it before it happens. So on the one hand, we hope we can help these events, whether it's the Alder Creek Pioneer Picnic, the Glenwood Rodeo, or the long list of Goldendale events, where people find out about it farther in advance if they come to the luncheon, where the newspapers and the media have a chance to not have to drive to Pickleton to hear about what's going on this year. The person's here in town and we're going to use our advertising dollars every month to, to announce what the luncheon schedules are and what events are going to be presented. And again, this circles back to what I just said about the observatory meeting that we had with merchants. We're also going to use those luncheon schedules to have maybe even a separate event where the organizers talk to the local merchants about, here's what you could do if you wanted to get more involved with what we're doing at our event. So we're trying to find ways to bring people together casually to think about what the business opportunity is to actually make some more sales. There's mention of a farm to food promotion that you'll hear a lot more about, but I wanted you to at least get the terminology down. There's a very successful effort that Oregon's been sponsoring, which has been more Hood River oriented. It's almost like, I'd call it a poker run, but of course it has to be fancied up a little bit for Hood River County. They have like a passport and for restaurants that have been certified for having 15% or more local produce content. And that could be everything from, from, you know, Duennell's to, it could be any restaurant that's even, you know, say at Mary Hill Cafe. If they had 15% local content in their food, you'd get what amounts to a stamp in this passport. They had 14,000 people do this in Hood River County last year. And the reason it hasn't been in this part of the world is that Oregon has a very well-established tourism program that funds these sorts of things. Washington doesn't, but the county's given us $6,000 to kind of buy our way into this pre-existing program. So my counterpart in the White Salmon Chamber and us are really going to try to pull some of those 14,000 people farther east and make some of our local people that are involved in that, you know, make some money off it and give the restaurants a reason about their local produce content. More about that as we expand. The observatory coming attractions is the next page. The Dark Skies Process is what my ask is going to be. One of the things that we can do to really help the observatory and to really help tourism related to the observatory is to become what's called a Dark Skies Community. It's a program that's run out of Tucson by a group called the International Dark Skies Association. They have a relatively long list of things you have to do, many of which we've already accomplished when they redid the ordinance and got it into the code a couple of years back, some of which still need to be done. And that's part of what you were paying me for last year and we finally got there. The, the next steps in this are to put in a letter from the city. I've got a draft letter for you to take a look at here that would go from the city to the Dark Skies Association. You had to find someone who's already in the association that can be your sponsor. Dave Ingram at Seattle Astronomers has already agreed to do that. If, if we want to proceed with this, it's up to you. We've got the Port of Seattle Tour Operator Visits coming that, you know, that was something I mentioned to you in the last presentation. We got $10,000 in the Port of Seattle to sponsor astronomy-related tourism. That's going to bring in at least one tour group this year. April Grand Opening, the chamber is very much involved in that. And I'll tell you, it's, it's well worth thinking about it as having an event up there too. Parks makes it pretty easy. And getting moving right along, I mean, I've kind of gone through what we're talking about with having the luncheons lead into promoting these events more effectively. And if you go to the last page, page six, that's where the ask comes in. I mean, as the next stage in this Dark Skies Process, it would be really good to have, and I, you know, you can do whatever you want with this draft letter. I just wanted to get something started for you. But if the city be willing to do that, I could strongly encourage you to at least put in the application for this Dark Skies Community. Before they actually make you a formal Dark Skies Community, they can give you a provisional status while you're spending up to three years working to meet all the requirements. And I think the one change that's happened since we all got to go through the ordinance rewrite a few years ago, is I think there's a much greater awareness that this new building has some real market potential for the rest of the community. I think some of the things that were a tough sell when we were working on the ordinance update a while back are probably a little more thought through and understood by some of the local merchants that might be affected by changes in their own business lighting. Whether that's the case or not, we'll find out. But at the very least, I think putting in for this provisional status gives us three years to work on it. And by being a provisional community, we can have at least a really, if we get it between now and when the observatory opens, we can look like we're really trying to support the state's facility with our local efforts. That's longer than I thought it was going to be. Sorry about that. Any, any red flags or alarms going off in your head or what's this all about type stuff? The main, the main thing is getting the chamber focused on retail businesses again, after doing all we can for these big, larger projects.
I have a question. Do you know what the number of businesses in town is compared to the number of businesses that are part of the chamber?
Oh, I'd say we're probably 25, 30%, if I had to guess. I've never, never really sat down and gone through a list of commercial business licenses and compared in the membership. Probably easiest to think of it in terms of where we get our money. We get about 30 or 35,000 from the county, which is the hotel motel tax. We get a roughly comparable amount from the city, which pays our salaries, pays for our infrastructure, pays for our consultants. We get about $10,000 to $12,000 in membership dues, which works out to about $100 a member. And the, the one thing we try to do is we have first years free. And frankly, if you're not a member, we don't restrict your access to our webpage or, you know, if, if you're not a member, we'll treat you like you are one if you just can't afford to belong.
I just wondered if there's a push for more membership so that the community can benefit more? Or trying to understand the chamber, is it, is that a standalone organization regardless of membership in the community? Or is it for commerce in the community?
Well, the real focus is trying to get retail sales up. And, you know, three, four years ago, when I first started doing this, it was pretty apparent to me that the, the biggest opportunity, and I know this rubs some folks the wrong way, and I totally understand that, was to try to get something going that brings in new, new businesses to either the industrial park or the region. And the thing about the projects that we focused on is that they may be in the county, but all the retail sales are going to be in the city. And that was the low hanging fruit. And frankly, three years ago, I felt like it was slipping away for, you know, really lack of attention, if you will. It's just, and I think between the mayor and Larry and I and, and the council, we got that turned around in a couple of different ways. And, you know, I'm, I'm much happier to be able to stand here three years ago and say, I've been neglecting my retail members in pursuit of something that I think is going to make them all rich, if it happens, than it would be to have it standing here and go, we've done everything we could for our retail members and we lost this $2 billion, $3,000 person year construction project in the process. It's just, it's one of those things where you're damned if you do and damned if you don't. Kind of the nature of public sector work, as you probably discovered too. But, you know, that's where I decided to put my efforts for a couple of years. And now that we've kind of gotten over what I think is the hurdle, is to go back to really trying to help the membership figure out how to make more money off of these other things.
Any other questions or comments?
Thanks. Call anytime if you got any, you know, if you wake up tomorrow and go, now wait a minute, what do you mean by that? Why isn't he doing this other thing? I'll, I'll have a better answer for you on what percentage of the businesses next time we cross paths.
Thank you, Dana. These are always interesting to hear and to think about as we go through day by day. The next time, Department Reports. Again, Reggie.
I just got four things tonight. I'll try to keep them kind of brief. First is going to be just an update. The last council talked about the schools and some programs that we're trying to put into the schools to help them with some security. And so for the past several weeks, we have been walking the hallways, especially during the lunchtime hours. We try to get there before school and we do this when there's no priority calls happening. This has been received very well, not only by the students, but also by the, by the staff at the schools. We've seen a decrease in our calls for service to the schools. So for everything that I have seen in some kind of a short period of time, it seems like everything is working. We're going to continue to do it again this week. And then my hope is to have meetings next week with the school administration and to see if this is something more that I need to put resources into to make it continue for the rest of the year. So, but I think it's a really good, everything that's happening has been really good, really positive in the schools. The second thing, we're trying to be more proactive and not a reactive police department. It's something that we've just added is put in a Goldendale Police Most Wanted. We have quite a few people in our community that have arrest warrants. And we've been struggling holding those people and being able to arrest those people. So now we're going to be putting out on our Facebook and also putting it into our newspaper. Last week we put in two. We're hoping to put one a week on every Wednesday. And this will give our citizens an opportunity to help us maybe locate some of these people who have arrest warrants in our community and, again, hold them accountable. We've, we've put out two press releases in the last couple of weeks. And I was going to kind of go through that really quickly, just in case maybe you guys haven't heard some things that have been going on. Last Tuesday, I'm in the early morning, around 4:30 in the morning, we did have a burglary call at the Carquest Auto Parts here in Goldendale. When we responded, what we found was the front glass door had been shot out with a 22 rifle. And we believe about five shots were fired into this glass door. We believe that somebody tried to break into it with another means first. They couldn't get in, and then they resorted to the rifle once they couldn't get in. When the person got in there, it was one person that ran into the Carquest. They stole two C D radios, which is a little unusual, something to steal with a lot of other things that are already in Carquest that are probably worth more value. But they took two C D radios and then they ran out very, very quickly. I think we estimated about 15 seconds is the whole time that they were inside of Carquest when they went running out. I went ahead and devoted two officers pretty much full time to this. Reason being is we don't see firearm crimes in Goldendale very often. So we wanted to really jump on this as quickly as we could. So we put as much extra resources to it as we, as we could. Within 24 hours, so that next day, which would have been Wednesday, at about 1:55 in the morning, Officer Dinan was doing just regular patrol and saw a man named Jacob Island. He was walking in the 300 block of South Cluckett Street, which is directly in front of the Father's House Church. And he was pushing a motorcycle. That's not something you normally see at 1:55 in the morning. So being an alert police officer, working the night shift, he tried to stop and talk to Jacob Island, who took off running from him. And he had a, get a warrant for his arrest. Strapped to the bike was a ski mask and also a 22 rifle. And obviously we matched that pretty quickly that this matched the items that were in the burglary of Carquest. He was chased to a residence at 329 West Bergen Street and went inside that residence and tried to hide. We were able to get consent to go in and we did find him behind a shower enclosure, a one-piece shower enclosure where he had actually jumped over the fiberglass and embedded himself into the wall. And then the shower was pulled back in. Very creative, very difficult for us to find. The officer's already been in there once and didn't find him. It was the second time that we went in that we were able to locate him behind this shower. During the search of his person, of Jacob Island's person, we found a ring and a necklace that had the same appearance as the ones that were seen in the Carquest video. And they were found on his hand and around his neck. We applied We applied for a search warrant, a search warrant of Myland's residence, and we found both of the stolen CDs inside of that residence. Also, we found the jacket that we saw in the surveillance and the pajama bottoms. It is pretty close. So Jacob Myland was going into the Clickitat County Jail on an arrest warrant. We're submitting additional charges for Myland for the Carquest burglary, being a felon in possession of a firearm, and for being in possession of a stolen firearm, another one that we found inside the residence, theft of the motorcycle, and for obstructing law enforcement. Also, when he was running from law enforcement, he did assault a person who tried to stop him by breaking. He swung at them and broke a bone in this person's hand, so we are also submitted assault to charges, which is a felony assault on him also. The officers did a great job on this within twenty-four hours. I think we took this extremely serious, and I give all the credit to the officers really being dedicated to this. We got a lot, we put this on Facebook, the video, and sometimes we do that and sometimes we don't. We did get a lot of phone calls in from our community, which is always a help, people who thought that they saw somebody with these pajama bottoms going in different stores and giving us names. And we were doing a lot of checks on all of that. We were following up on every person that called in, but it ended up, it was somebody that we found pushing a motorcycle at one-fifty-five in the morning. So I'm very happy that, and we got a full confession, so I'm very happy with that case. The second one happened just this last Saturday night at about eleven o'clock, eleven-ten in the evening. Officer Stelges was on just routine patrol, and he attempted to make a traffic stop on a two thousand eleven Volkswagen Jetta for an equipment violation. Officer Stelges attempted to make that traffic stop right over here on Sentinel Street, but the vehicle continued without stopping. He immediately put on his emergency lights and his siren, and he was in a fully marked patrol car. The vehicle continued on Railroad Avenue and then on South on a Clickitat without stopping. It was going through stop signs without stopping and also swerving across the lanes of travel. Officer Kenny also joined into this pursuit. The vehicle continued and did not stop until it came to, it was doing a lot of erratic speeds, but it ended up coming to a stop on West Collins and Washington Street, where two males in the vehicle bailed out and took off running. Officer Stelges and Officer Kenny got into a foot pursuit, and they were able to arrest Adam Bronson and Christopher Worship about a block away. They both had arrest warrants for them. We went ahead and called out our K nine Officer Berkshire and our K nine Harley to do an outside perimeter sniff of the vehicle. The K nine did alert to the vehicle, so we went ahead and had it impounded, and we did, and we applied for a search warrant that night, about three o'clock in the morning. And inside that vehicle, we did find illegal narcotics in that vehicle, which we are now submitting additional charges. We arrested Worship for his warrant and for felony elude, and then Bronson, we arrested him for his warrant and for possession of methamphetamine. And those charges have been submitted to our county U P A. So, Mary, that's the end of my report.
Thank you. People here now from New York, Hong, Farshay.
First of all, I want to say thanks to Reggie and his crew that, in my opinion, is pretty good, or they do work, which is really good with the fire department and everything like that. It's just really good to hear that stuff. So I think I told you guys before, the Washington State Reading Bureau is coming to the fire department and the city of Goldendale. We've been doing a lot of work with that. A few years, we went with an online-based reporting system, and it's actually working out really well that we have that. Unfortunately, we haven't put all the information into the computer, so that's what we're doing right now, but we figured out that it's actually well worth our money and it's going to work very well for us. Second, it seems like we've been getting a lot of smoke detectors and CO detector alarms lately, and I just want to remind everybody to check your batteries and/or if they're going off, get ahold of somebody. Just a little reminder, because it just seems like we've had a lot of malfunctions with them, and a lot of times, it's a battery issue. So, that's all I have.
Thanks, Lauren. Because detectors can save a lot of lives if they're eighteen.
They can.
If you need to have them. Thank you very much, both of you. The next item that we have business on, and we don't have council business, resolutions or ordinances tonight, but we will have the report now of our officers and the city administrator. I will begin with Larry Darling.
Okay, this is in response to Phil's question, and actually Lauren had found this as well, this book that I'm going to talk about in a minute. There's a section under Open Public Meetings Act, and it's on page eleven, but it talks about procedural requirements that apply to regular meetings. The meeting agenda must be available online at least twenty-four hours in advance of the regular meeting. This requirement does not apply if the city, county, district does not have a website or if the employees are fewer than ten full-time equivalent employees. We actually meet both those tests, but under the footnote, footnote forty-two says that the laws of two thousand fourteen, this requirement does not mean that an agenda cannot be modified or after it's posted online. Also, a failure to comply with this requirement with respect to a meeting will not invalidate or otherwise legal action taken at the meeting. So we can go ahead and have a meeting. I will let you know that our practice is, our overall practice is, number one, to have the council packets available by Thursday at five o'clock is our goal. And then two, on Friday of that same week before the council meeting, we do make it available to the media as well as post it online. So that's our standard procedure. So we did miss this one, but we endeavor to meet that deadline every time. This time, it didn't meet the twenty-four hour, but it sounds like we're okay as far as taking action at this meeting. If there's a problem with us not getting the council packet out on Thursday, sometimes we do let the council members know that we're running a little bit late. We try not to do that, but sometimes it's inevitable because of different things that are going on. We will let you know that it's not available, and they give you a time certain when it will be available. But for sure, it's, our alternative goal is to make sure that the media and the packets are available by Friday at five o'clock. So if we can't meet the Thursday deadline at five o'clock, then we do everything we can to make sure that it is available by Friday. So that's a little bit of our practice.
Thank you, Larry.
You're welcome. And thank you, you confirmed, you confirmed what I had found as well, so thanks.
It's definitely challenging, you know, in these rural communities and limited staff and budgets to try and meet everything that we're required to do and all the deadlines and stuff. But I'm glad we're on the side of efficiency rather than just bureaucratic fluke.
Okay. Okay, so in light of that, I did provide you, I had some conversations with a couple of people who are new to the council and what was the, what were we going to do to kind of bring the council members up to speed on their roles and responsibilities? And one of the things that I prepared for you tonight is a book, a notebook of handbooks. These are available through Municipal Research Services. And by the way, Municipal Research Services is a tool that can, is available to council members as well. If you have certain questions about issues related to the city and how it's run, or, well, just anything that you have questions on related to your actions and your responsibilities or questions you might have, there are people available to, M R S E would call them, Municipal Research Services Council. They're available during the day to respond to your questions. But anyway, they provide several handbooks of interest to council members, so I picked out six of them that I think are of interest to you. And since there are five of you that are served here less than a year, I thought maybe it was a good idea to give you some information about which you can review. So the first one is the Code City Handbook, then there's the Handbook for Mayor and Council Members. There's one about knowing your territory, appearance of fairness doctrine, Open Public Meetings Act, and Public Records Act. So I know there's a lot there, but if you need something to put you to sleep, you can have it right there by your bed. Some of it's a little bit dry, some of it you can just skim over, and other parts are probably really of interest to you. So anyway, that's, that's one of the things that I would, that I was hoping to do to bring our council up to speed on things and to begin the process of educating the council on the city of Goldendale and our opportunities here. The second thing that I'd like to do is basically call the Council Dues and Don'ts. It's a training that's provided by the Washington City's Insurance Authority, and they bring down their executive director and their assistant executive director, and they do a special executive session-type training on do's and don'ts for council members. We've done this in the past as we've had council members rotating in and out. It becomes a time, a good time to make that happen. So we've actually made an inquiry of them to come down at one of our meetings, and we'll adjourn early and go into executive session, have about an hour-long session with training on do's and don'ts. So we're working on that. The final thing that I'm trying to set up, if we can, is a tour of some of our major facilities in town. For instance, I've got written down here, City Hall, of course, you, this would be a place where we'd meet to start off. We would try to set up a open house at the police department, the fire department, the public workshop facility, the pump station on Horseshoe Bend Road, and the wastewater treatment plant. And actually, Reggie has indicated that we can use one of their vans from the church over here, and we can take, have it take us all together to each of these sites. The hard part's going to be finding a date when you could all, when we could all be available. So just for sake of argument, or sake of throwing a date out there, would, since you don't plan anything for the twenty-ninth of February usually, your calendars are probably open, right? Because it only happens every four years. So anyway, I was thinking about a Saturday, and I was thinking about something like an eight-thirty to noon type amount of time, and then just get in and go to the various places and learn about what the city of Goldendale does and the things that, because we're going to, for instance, the wastewater treatment plant is going to be a major subject over the next couple of years as we try to comply with new regulations that are coming down from the Department of Ecology. So there's going to be, and then a need to have a good understanding of what that does out there. So anyway, February twenty-ninth is a Saturday. It's like for eight-thirty to noon, would everybody be available on that day for a chance?
Okay. Maybe we'll do. I'll have to check the bus.
Okay, well, you know a lot, you're one of the old timers. Shannon, would you want to come, or?
Sure.
You don't have to come. You've probably seen most of them, but...
I've seen a lot of most of these facilities.
Okay. Well, if we, if we're going to do that, then we have to announce it as a special council meeting, because there's more than three of you. So it'll actually be a situation where we'll open a, we'll indicate that there's a special session of the council and tell them where we're traveling and when approximately, so that they have an idea of where we are, because it really is an open public meeting, because there's more than three of you. But we can, we can make arrangements to do that. So is eight-thirty too early, or eight o'clock? Not yet.
I'm pushing it.
I'm up at four.
Three and you.
Yeah.
I think we're going to do eight-thirty.
Eight-thirty would be nice.
I like the idea. I really do. I think it'd be great.
Well, I think it brings you all up to get you in this, and I'll have the department heads and supervisors available in each one of those buildings.
Good.
So that you can ask questions and learn more about what the process is and how it gets from here to there and all of that, so. Okay, I'll make arrangements to have that happen, and I have a few more items that I need to go through. Okay, back up, that's the twenty-ninth of February, and it's on a Saturday, so we'll get that set up. On the, back to the nineteenth of February, we have a public works committee that I think we set up at the last council meeting, and the public works committee is primarily going to discuss what we're going to do at Econy Park with regards to the kitchen, and we're going to talk about what we, what we're going to do in place of the kitchen building when we tear it down. So we're looking at a learn, we're also trying to look at possibility of doing a learn-to-burn, so we'll coordinate with the fire department as well, and talk about what we want to build in place at the, where the existing kitchen is now located. So that's going to be the major topic of discussion at the public works meeting on the nineteenth, which is tomorrow, and it's going to start at six o'clock. And then the next meeting is an ordinance committee meeting that's on February twenty-fourth. Before I leave, public works committee, who are my public works committee? Okay, very good. And then the ordinance committee is...
There's someone else in there.
There's somebody else. Okay, well, we'll find out.
I'm on ordinance.
Oh, you're on ordinance. Okay, you get both days. Yay. So that's on the twenty-fourth, on ordinance committee. Now, the ordinance committee...
Is that six?
That's at six as well, yes.
Okay.
The ordinance committee, we're going to talk about, it could be quite a meeting, because we want to talk about some concerns or some, not concerns, but discussion about the parking ordinance and how it's working in our community. And Reggie has some on-the-ground experiences that he'd like to share with, with the ordinance committee and talk about maybe some amendments to the, to the parking, no parking statutes. So that'll be one thing we'll discuss. We'll also have some discussion about the nuisance code, because we're getting ready to start up a renewed interest in nuisance enforcement, so we wanted to kind of give the ordinance committee a chance to see what types of things we think apply and how they apply, and just get your, get your advice on how we're moving through that and making sure that our language is the way we want it to be. And then the last thing, which I, there's been some discussion about what's going on with the old nursing home or the, I mean, Mount Adams Care Center, that's what it was called. The Mount Adams Care Center, about in two thousand and eighteen, August of two thousand and eighteen, we entered into a real estate purchase and sale agreement that had some contingencies attached to it about the progress that needs to be made with regard to demolition of the building and future construction of a project, and they're looking at some residential and some single families, so the single family, multifamily residential. But there were some contingencies in that that are coming due in April, in August of two thousand and twenty-two. But we actually have some new news that we need to share with a committee, the council, and we need to get their advice and recommendation for the full council, because it's very important information that I think needs to be shared at a council committee level. And because the ordinance committee is meeting on the twenty-fourth, I think that might be the best committee to handle this request, and it'll be a timely response to their request for a review of that, of those clauses that are in the real estate purchase and sale agreement. So if the council would indulge me, I would like to give concurrence that we refer this matter to the ordinance committee for action on the twenty-fourth, and then we would get their recommendation and bring it to the council on the second of March. Do I shake your hands? All right, very good. Let's see. And a couple more items. One of the major projects that we talked about already, that Dana brought up, was the airport capital improvements at the airport. We did have a good meeting... We did have a good meeting today with our consultant who has brought, who brought in a, another consultant to do a wetlands analysis because the wetlands analysis is going to be required as part of this project environmental checklist. And then we, we've got another consultant that came up that has to do historical and archaeological analysis up there as well. So those two are working pretty well. They're all part of the environmental work, which is a requirement before we can actually sign a contract with the Department of Commerce. So now we're getting, we have to wait for their reports. Once we get their reports, then we'll submit those to the Department of Commerce and be able to make sure that we have, we're under contract with them to get this project started. So the other thing we did do was we met with Pioneer Surveying and Engineering as well to talk about the binding site plan, the boundary line adjustment, and the conditional use application, which are all part of the planning process, which has to go on in front of the, the Board of Adjustment for Clickitat County. So we're getting all this stuff together. We hope to submit the planning and land use documents that we need, including the CIPA in, at their deadline date sometime in mid-March. And then hopefully we can go through the process of getting that environmental work completed and resolved, and then go on next to the public hearing for the conditional use, and then we'd be in a position to start putting together designs for the fuel system and stuff that we're working on. I think that's just about it. Okay.
Very good. Thank you, Larry, very much. We'll begin our reports with Myland Mullin.
Well, thank you, Mary. I just wanted to relate on the comments that Dana Beck made on the Goldendale Chamber. I think they've got some very good plans coming up for the spring and summer, and so I look forward to, to these events, so.
Phil?
Well, big thanks to the police department. They've been busy in taking care of things. It seems like criminal cases had a control a little bit there. It's not even warm yet, so.
Don't tell Reggie.
Sorry, but. And then, so as I have a couple of things, I think that's all I can think of right now. Everything else skipped my mind, so.
Good, thanks, Phil.
I just want to, I think on behalf of everyone at Goldendale Carquest, like to thank Reggie and everyone that worked on the case there. Really appreciate all of your hard work. Thank you.
Thanks, Anthony. Shannon?
I just want to say thanks to the police department because for all the people that grumble and say that the police aren't doing anything, I think you can probably look at their eyes and see how tired they are. I think they're doing plenty.
Appreciate it. I say thanks to Reggie for taking time out to talk to me about some of the school-related issues last week. And Connie, thanks for taking time out to talk about some of the financials today. And Larry, really appreciate the handbook and setting up the tours and stuff, helping getting me, especially as a new council person, to be up to speed on some of this.
Good, thank you.
Yeah, great work, Police Department. It was, I, I heard the, I saw the press release over the weekend. I don't think I saw the end of the story where the individual was like crawling behind the shower. I had a similar incident that happened with my cats a couple of weeks ago. They got behind the shower, it was like involved ripping the wall out. It was pretty amazing. It's like a normal behavior for a cat or a human being that's, like, you really don't want to get found. And really appreciated hearing from Dana. I'm really excited about the observatory. I mean, we've all been talking and talking, oh, the observatory, and now it's like we are, it's, it's going to happen months out, so that's, that's going to be, I think, a really, really great boost for, for the community and for some of our local businesses. It can, you know, ride on the coattails of that. Like Dana said, I don't think there's any shame in doing that. I think we would be remiss to, to not grab onto that type of an opportunity. And Larry, thank you as well for all of this, and I, I look forward to touring around the city on a Saturday morning here in a couple of weeks. It's at eight-thirty, so I still get to sleep in a little bit, like that's still sleeping in my normal day. Yeah.
Thank you, Mary. I want to jump on the bandwagon and congratulate Reggie and his department. They've done some great placework and being on the other end of the radio, it's, we kind of feel a sisterhood, brotherhood with you guys, so good job. I also want to thank NOAA. I had the opportunity yesterday to start volunteering at the fire department and to see the number of volunteers that were there doing different things around. Pretty impressive that we have a group of citizens that are willing to give their time to the fire department and looking forward to getting the fire corps going and hopefully getting more volunteers for the fire department. So I appreciate what you guys do as well. And Larry, thank you for the book. This would be very helpful and looking forward to the tour as well.
Thank you, Jerry. Thank you. On the mayor's side, I just have one thing, because of the newness of most ever one, when we got the five hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the airport, a lot of people, local people, not councilmen, but others felt like, well, go get a bucket of gas and let's start filling up planes, and we're in business. Well, when it's government money coming into something like a city airport, it's astounding the different hoops you have to go through. And these hoops have to all be finished before you get anything or even draw out of those funds. They stay at the Department of Commerce and their funds. But the thing is, we're making good progress on that. The meeting we had with our consultants today at the day, they're taking a number of things, getting them in line and coordinating them and taking those steps. So we'll be, we're moving faster than we thought we could, but it's not anywhere near as fast as what people would have thought that didn't know about what government, our government does to business. It'll get frustrating and it's even better later. But that's all I have. The next item on the agenda is a public comment. Is anyone here for a public comment? I don't think so. All the public commenters mostly left. If not, we need a motion to end this meeting.
Soon. Second.
It's been moved and seconded to close the city council meeting for February eighteenth, two thousand and twenty. All in favor?
All right.
One other thing, the next session will be on March second.